I'd like to follow the order of the regularly scheduled meeting, December meeting of the Bryan City School Board of Education. Let us stand for the flag.
Let me just do the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic from which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rob, do you follow the rules?
Scott Van Eden.
Here.
Cindy Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingley.
Good.
Deb Updike.
Here.
Mike Stockman.
Here.
Thank you.
You have before you the minutes for the regularly scheduled board meeting for November. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Deb.
I'll take a second.
Mike. Paul Roera.
Cindy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Thank you.
Under public participation, we have Mr. Keeler here that would like to discuss.
Keller.
Keller, I'm sorry. All right, Keller.
It's okay, it's only one.
I did call Keller a lot, so it's a good name.
All right. Laura Jors.
I would, I'll keep this brief, thank you for your time. I would like to strongly urge the board to enact a new employee ID numbering system to prevent some systemic errors that may have occurred in the past. And secondly, my wife and I would be willing to address the court specifically to seek sanctions against plaintiffs in current litigation against Bryan City Schools. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
You dig.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll go on to communications for four county.
Hi, good evening. I would like to announce that there will be an open house at four county. All are welcome, January 7th, starting at 5:00 PM and going until 7:30. Currently, applications are available online for the 2019-2020. I know we're talking about school calendars already, but it just sounds... Not even at 19.
Close.
But to say 2019-2020 school year for four county. You can go to fourcounty.net and look that up. Our students at four county will be enjoying their Christmas break, starting the 24th through the January 1st. And last but not least, I'd like to congratulate Olivia Valderas. Please correct me, Mr. Rary if I'm saying anything wrong.
You got it.
And Trinity Anthony for being selected for the leadership team for Skills USA. It was exciting to have two of our Bryan students on that. That's my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the treasurer's report and recommendations. Mr. Rosmar.
Thank you for reviewing the financial reports for the month ended November 30th, 2018. At Farmers Emergent State Bank, a balance of $3,839,566. Payroll outstanding checks and adjustments, $118,668. Investments at Star Ohio, $810,478. At EBS Financial, $4,274,12. At State Bank, $6,281,626. And at Star Ohio, plus $2,528,893. Petty cash and change funds total, $7,400. Total funds at the end of November, $176,23,307. Of those funds, our general fund balance at the end of November is $13,653,538. Our bond retirement fund, $1,189,630. Our permanent improvement fund, $1,624,094. Once again, total funds available at the end of November, $176,23,307. Our SM2 report, year-to-date, our revenues are about $132,000 above projections. Our expenses, about $26,000 over. So our positive variance is $157,000 at this point in time. Any questions regarding those reports? If not, we'll review the amended appropriations. Our appropriation total is $27,728,743. Changes during the month of November totaled $78,767. Any questions regarding the amended appropriations? If not, the next item, we ask for authorization to bid two buses through NADA, our purchasing association that we belong to. We're going to bid two buses, 77 or 78 seat buses, which will be purchased in July 2019. But we're going to get the bidding and so forth handled at this point in time so that we can take delivery of those in the summer. Because according to the supplier, the supply's a little tighter this year than normal.
Okay. Any additional questions for Mr. Rosmar?
I'll review the donations, Mr. Rary.
You want to take and you want to have a call for a motion on that for this point?
Why don't they do the donations and then do a motion?
All right, that'll be fine.
Okay. We'll do several donations here. We thank the community for their generosity this last month. Kristen Diaz, 11 cricket cartridges for Bryan Elementary. Newland Quest made several donations to the district. $500 for the bear bag program, $300 for the high school wrestling program, $100 for the one-to-one laptop program, $400 for the youth and government trip, and $100 for the National Honor Society, all those from the Newland Quest club. $100 from newcomer Shaker Spangler and Branger for the youth and government trip. $75 from Amy Taylor for that youth and government trip, as well as $100 from JT and Georgia Stelsberg. And also $275 from Bryan Civic League for the youth and government trip. Another $300 from Newland Quest for the girls soccer program. $100 from the Bryan Lions Club for the Light Sunshine Singers. $20 plus clothing from the Bryan Lions Club for Bryan Elementary. And Williams County Agriculture Society, $150 donation to our high school. We thank all those organizations for their generous donations.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Are there any additional questions for Rob at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report and recommendations, including the... And announcement of the donations, the resolution for everything for the bus bids, as well as the financial report. So moved. Scott? Mike?
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, we have our organizational meeting scheduled for January 14th, 2019. Also be our regular meeting for the month of January. Will take place here at the Fieldhouse Boardroom at 7 o'clock. As part of that, we ask the board to appoint a president per temp for the organizational meeting.
I would like to suggest appoint nominate Tom to be the pro temp for the organizational meeting.
So moved. Mike?
I need to check.
Yeah, second. Do you have a second? You have a second. Scott?
I'll mic check and then I'll say.
Okay, that's fine.
Excuse me. Okay. Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Under old business, I'm not aware of any, Mrs. Savage? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to new business. We have the discussion for the annual organization meeting reminder here. We got the board officers are to be elected, they'll be administered, service fund established, board committees appointed, establish meeting schedule, as well as the Ohio School Board Association membership considered. We will be reviewing and talking about all of those, and we will have those in place or ready to go at the next, at the organization, or I guess the regularly scheduled meeting in January. With that, we'll move on to the board committee assignment for 2019. You going to fill that again?
I would like to, yes.
Cindy, so do we have a motion to appoint Cindy as the four county career center representative?
So moved.
Scott, do you have a second? Mike? Paul Roera.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindy?
I'm saying.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to the superintendent's recommendation, Mrs. Savage?
Hey, Andrew, administrative recommendations. We'll start with a topic that we did discuss a little bit last month, and that is looking at the classified substitute rates for our secretary, educational aide, food service, and custodian. We would like to propose that that increase to $11.50 an hour for all of those areas effective January 1st. And as a reminder, we did a comparison of our rates with those in the four county area, and we have not addressed this in a very long time, so we ask the board for their approval. We have a special education waiver application that needs to be board approved so that we can send it on to ODE. In our elementary specialized classroom, we are over the allowable count. We've taken a look at trying to transfer classrooms. We have transferred one student, but we're still over the state maximum. We can apply for this waiver because we do have additional adult support. We have no reason to doubt that it won't be approved, but it has to be board approved before we can send it in. You saw many donations for the youth and government trip to Columbus, so we would ask the board to approve that overnight trip request. This is an annual opportunity that we've taken advantage of. It started about three years ago. A group of students will get to go down and see government in real action. They'll get to argue for bills and see the process live and take place. And then it is also time, as you mentioned earlier, Cindy, to start getting ready for 2019-20. So our first step is approval of the six-to-12 curriculum guide. We attached that for your review, and we highlighted the changes there. And we're excited about the changes, and I'm sure Mark will touch on those a little bit later on. Under commendations, we recognize our students for going above and beyond. I'd like to point out just a few from the long list that you see in front of you. For the six-to-12 campus, the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Representatives, Abby Vernonam.
Vernon Hugh.
Vernon Hugh, thank you. Toni Melanda and Shaylen Miley. Our Northwest Ohio Leadership Conference participants. Our Black Swamp Swamp Honors Choir. Our academic league team was the Williams County Champions, so congratulations to them. Our Business Professionals of America Vice President, Defiance County Fair, and FFA National Convention students. And Karen is going to talk in her report a little bit later about the many students at the elementary that were recognized and kind of the different reasons for that recognition. So at that time, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, with that, we would entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's administrative recommendations.
So moved.
Deb, do you have a second? Mike, can you call Roera?
Scott?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Under personnel recommendations, we have a transfer of classified staff. Linda Watson to six-to-12 food service server effective January 31st. That is due to a retirement. Salary schedule placement, Kathy Vidid, we congratulate her on obtaining her master's degree, and that'll go into effect January 1st, 2019. And certified and classified substitutes are listed for your approval as well.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Savage. Any questions for Mrs. Savage relative to any of the personnel recommendations? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Cindy, do you have a second? Second. Mike? Roera.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
So, under policy items, in your board docs, we went ahead and again, last month, we discussed updating policy 6152 in response to clarifying some of the language, which I went ahead and did that. So for 6152, this will be a first and second reading. And then the second reading and approval of the board items that were recommended changes by NOLA. We did make the update in the student handbook as well in terms of student fees. However, that will not go into effect until we approve the other handbook changes, which we will do sometime in March or April.
Okay. Any additional questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the first and second reading on the board policy, as well as the second reading and approval of the policies as listed. So moved. Mike? Do you have a second?
Second?
Yep, can you call Roera?
Tom?
Yes, Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tonight, I do have a few discussion items. I want to go back to our special ed concerns and continued growth. So we have seen an extraordinary amount of special education students that are already identified that are moving into our community. Many of them are coming from out of state. So we have had a huge influx in the number of students that we're serving, but it also impacts our related service areas. And specifically, right now, we're seeing an excessive strain, not only in the classroom waiver we filled out, but in the areas of psych, school psychology, and speech. We are working with the ESC to try to come up with some ways that we could maybe address this problem. But one piece that's been identified, we've also reached out to the University of Toledo to talk about creating a partnership with them to get some help in the school psychologist area, in the terms of a psych assistant. They have student placements, they have internships, they have different levels, depending on if you're a year one, year two, or year three graduate student, where if we can form this partnership, we could get students placed here that would help alleviate some of our concern and some of our caseloads that are quickly approaching too high of a number. We've met with University of Toledo, we think that that is going to go forward, but it won't be enacted until 2019-20, or even 2021, because it depends on when they have students in their program. I would like to request the board to consider allowing me to post a position for a school psych assistant. This is a bachelor degree person. They would help with testing, they would help with report writing, they would help with observing students. They would, however, be overseen by our two school psychologists. Many of the surrounding schools employ psych assistants. This is new for us, but in researching it, they work at the ESC, they work at Fairview, they work in Williams County. It's an hourly rate, it's a SERES retirement, it's not a teacher position, it is a SERES position. I have a job description that I borrowed from the ESC, and I can pass that down. I probably should have made copies, and I did not. But I just would like the board to consider that as an option to help alleviate some of the tremendous caseload numbers that we're seeing. So questions on that?
Is this something you need, you want some action on this evening, or...
I don't need action until we were to employ. I do need the board's consent to go ahead and start searching. I would like to try to get this person in place for the second half of the school year.
All right. On the Toledo partnership with the University of Toledo, is it possible that we could get, if there were enough students in that program, that we could get multiple students? We could get a one-year, first-year student or a third-year, have multiples here, or is it only one at a time?
It is a possibility, it's not a high probability.
Okay.
The thing that prevents us is our location. But we're trying to use that as our advantage. We are definitely willing to take a year one, a year two, and a year three, because they can all do different aspects of the position. But right now, the best we have is a possible year two for next year.
Mrs. Savage, you said that there was an influx in terms of the number of students needing services coming to our district from out of state? These are people that are coming to Bryan, and they just, they have children that have special needs?
Correct.
Or are they focusing on us as a location that has quality service, providing quality service, and so they choose to come here, or what's the dynamics that's driving this?
We'd like to know. You know, we hear that quite often. We have students who want to open enroll. We have, because of our numbers, had to deny open enrollment in some areas, and those same families, the next week, have secured a residence within our district. So they definitely feel that our services are worth relocating their family to this area.
All right, so you need a motion to at least allow you to start looking?
Correct.
All right. Somebody like to make the motion?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
I don't have a second.
All right, probably you call me.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I thank you, and we'll keep you updated. Again, we want to finalize that job description, and we want to post, see what type of candidates we get, and go from there before we make any final determinations.
Can you send that to us electronically, so I can review it a little bit?
Yes, I can. It's not the final version, as the ESC.
But I'd like to be able to see that and maybe make some suggestions. Just haven't seen it for the first time.
No, not a problem. Still a work in progress. I would also like to talk tonight a little bit about school calendars as well. So we currently have been meeting with a calendar committee composed of volunteers from within our district. And the calendar committee put together two calendar proposals for the staff to consider. We sent those two proposals out last Friday. I met with staff last week to kind of talk about the differences in the two calendars. There's also a YouTube video that explains a little bit about the calendars. So once we have the final determination from the committee, once they get a chance to review the staff input, we'll be bringing that to the board for your discussion and review in January. But again, because of state law, you won't vote in January, you won't make a final determination until February. And that'll give time for the public and the community and parents to take a look at the calendar and have any comments or things. So we will share with you the progress of that, but we are as well are working on that and getting ready for 1920. And then, Mr. Rary, are you going to talk about graduation requirements?
Okay.
Okay, I'll leave that to you. So we're just a few reminders. We already talked about our organizational meeting. LPDC meeting is to be determined, so we'll turn it over to Mr. Rupert.
Good evening. We're kind of, we're kind of in the midst right of, right away of winter schedules and stuff, but I want to get some more word out. We had, we had some issues with our sport athletic passes, being able to verify who has what and whatever. And we've kind of gone on a system of trying to be able to honor when they, when they don't have them or whatever, but we've come to the point where we've had enough issues that we're asking people, and we're just trying to get more word out, to present the pass every time they come into a paid event. Obviously, we have some events that aren't paid that require passes and stuff. But due to those issues, we just want people to show them. Along with that, understand that that can bring a lot of inconvenience to people coming to a ballgame on a night, on a certain night or whatever. So we've been trying to get feedback from some of those people. One of the things that they suggested was to allow them to take a picture on their smartphone and show that. We're perfectly fine with that. We're trying to get word out to our ticket takers and those sorts of things, so it is a little bit more convenient for people. We're also considering some other feedback as we go through this, but we're trying to get word out that we need to see passes so that we can verify that people are coming in and they're doing what they're supposed to do basically. I understand it can be a little inconvenient, and we're sympathetic to that, but we've got to, we've got to look for a better way to try to go about our passes, so that's what we're trying to do. And this is something we'll keep, continue to look at, keep working on throughout the year. As far as updates, girls' basketball off to a pretty good start, four and two. They had a big win over Defiance last Saturday. They'll play at Springfield this Saturday, and then we host our own holiday tournament, 28th and 29th, which is Friday, Saturday, so a little over a week away coming up over the break. Boys' basketball, they're three and two. They've got a couple of games coming up this weekend. They're home with Bats Friday, and then Saturday, they go to Napoleon, and then they play in a holiday tournament at Defiance College, 27th and 28th of the following week, so that'd be Thursday, Friday. Also with that, wrestling, they've been in three tournaments already, at Mount Pillars, Norton Anderson, had some pretty good showings. They're at Evergreen this Thursday, and then over break, 28th and 29th, so again, Friday, Saturday, they're going to be on the road at Defiance, a big tournament. It's teams in from different states. I think there's three states represented in there, so pretty big tournament that will be involved in Defiance. Bowling, off to a real hot start. That program's been, been rolling pretty well for the last few years. Both teams are undefeated, boys and girls are undefeated. I think they played, they've bowled four matches, regular season matches, and then they had a tournament, which our girls were fortunate enough to win, and the boys placed ninth, and that was at Norton. Things they got coming up, they are actually at Liberty Center tonight, and then they're at Swanton on Friday. And then they host a tournament over break, well, kind of over break, our last day of school. First weekend is going to be Saturday, right, and break when break starts the 22nd. They'll host their own tournament in the morning, so some opportunities come up to those kids as well. Swim and dive, they've been to the Napoleon Invite, girls were fourth, boys were fifth. And they've had some dual meets and try meets here and there throughout. And then this last weekend, they, they traveled to bowling, I think it's Bowling Green and Fostoria.
Fremont.
Fremont, okay. And they had two, those two sites, and then they took the finals, or the best out of those two sites and brought them to the finals, and we had a really good showing. Not to go into too many kids and stuff, but we had a lot of first-place finishes. And the tournament overall, I think it was told, over a thousand swimmers and divers in there, so had a really good showing. Another, another program continues to thrive for us, so. Middle school, they're on the way too. Girls' basketball's been rolling, boys' basketball and wrestling as well. So we just hosted last weekend, I believe it was last weekend, or again, ready to get it, two weekends ago, we hosted our junior high wrestling tournament at the high school gym, went pretty well for the most part, so. Kind of where we're at with athletics, and if you have any questions, I would have to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. Rary.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I just have a couple of things. First of all, since we met, this has been a couple of weeks ago, the third grade test results came in. Just refresher, that's a test piece, test in October, but it's over the entire third grade content. So it's where they should be at the end of the year, but we tested in October to see if we can pass then, before we had really a chance to show up that much. So we're about 36% passes, 36% of our kids, I guess, are past the third grade level by now. That's right around normally where we're at in the fall. Then we, from there, we break them down. We meet the teachers Wednesday, look at trends, look at individual kids, see where we're at. Another kind of hurdle we jump into there with all the new enrollees, is we have a big enrollment in that class this year. So these are kids that we're, we tested in October, but we have no track record with them. So we're kind of, we're learning them as well. They come with some records, but obviously, when they come from Michigan and other states, they're not exactly, they don't match what we're expecting. So we work through those processes, try to learn those kids and see where the gaps are, and provide some intervention for them. They also have alternative tests throughout the year, so we'll star alternative tests. Through our STAR program, January 23rd, that's just a different test with an opportunity for them to pass that for the third grade reading guarantee for that. But then, as the calendar year rolls over, it's the time of year where we start forming some committees together and looking at curriculum material, textbooks and such for next year. This year, we're looking at K-5 math, so it'll be a lot of the... This year, we're looking at K-five math, so it'll be a relatively big adoption, and we'll pull some representatives from each grade level, and look at some research-based curriculum.
Thank you. Thank you.
Scott?
Good evening, just a couple things. I know I touched on a few of these topics last week. I wanted to touch on JA for a minute, and the importance of JA. I work with Heidi Brown to get volunteers to come into the school, and we've had some struggle getting some of our volunteers into the school. So we are really grateful for those that have come in to give back to the community and have helped out. It means a lot to the kids. We were able to have a successful JA in a day for, or JA for first grade. So thank you to all of those people who donated their time, the companies that let them out, and to give back to the kids at Malwa. Also, right now, at this time, the three thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and three cents that we, as a district, raised for Christmas for kids is all being put to good use for our students right here in Williams County, so those students can receive a Christmas too. So I wanted to make sure, again, we thank the community for donating that amount of money. We have an event in January, starting in January, we're still in preparing for the plans for that. It's related to PDIS and family involvement. It's going to be a family literacy night, and it's going to involve every student. It's called One Book One School. So more information will come out on that, but it's going to involve every student at the elementary, so we're super excited about that. We did also find out that Bryan Elementary is on track for a state support team PDIS award for next year, with all the progress that we've made with PDIS. We had a successful hour of code. Jamie Morris and Ann Bible were in classrooms every single day the week of December third through the seventh. So I'm sure you noticed all of those pictures on Facebook. Students loved it, they want more. So, a special shout-out to Ann Bible and Jamie Morris for all their hard work trying to get in kindergarten through fifth grade, every single class. On December seventh, we had several of our students go to the Rotary Christmas Party. That's something that they do every year, that was a special event. Again, we love seeing the smiles on the students' faces, and the giving of what the Rotary does for some of our students, so we also wanted to reach out to the Rotary and thank them. On December twelfth, we had our first grade celebration of Christmas around the world, learning about different cultures at Christmas time, that's a big thing that they do. On December fourteenth, we held our first VE Annual Recognition Assembly. We had over eight hundred students who recognized first through fifth grade for growing in math and reading. We had over three hundred students recognized for perfect attendance, music, art, PE, top star scores, and character traits. So that was our first, first time that we did all of that together. Mrs. Dominic and Mrs. Thormeyer put that together, and it went well. We're still tweaking as we go, though, we're getting some feedback, and we're still tweaking as we go. The fifth grade ambassadors are still continuing to be leaders in our building. They are greeting, helping with breakfast, helping with bear bags. They are also going to participate in the gratitude drive campaign through the Bryan Area Foundation. So, we're continuing, we're continuing to see leaders in our building. We have a PTO holiday shop this week at the Bryan Elementary. We have little objects for twenty-five cents, all the way up to, they're all at different price ranges, but I think the highest is maybe eight dollars. That is something that our PTO started, so that students can buy little things for their loved ones, grandma, grandpa, mom, dad. But we also have, if a student wants to purchase something and they don't have that fund, we also have items that were donated, and they're able to still get something, so it's something for everyone. End of second quarter is Friday, January twenty-first, and Bryan Elementary will be sending home report cards. That is something that we wavered on, do we wanna stay online? Do we want to print report cards? We did get some feedback from our community, and they would like to have them printed. Our teachers spend a lot of time on writing their comments, and that was one thing that, in the feedback that we got back, parents were not able to easily access the comments on the report cards. We wanna make sure that it's very easy for parents to read those comments and to get that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rary?
All right. Like the elementary, we had a lot of the same, similar experiences this month. And the month is, well, it's almost one of our, our students are probably studying for exams as we speak, I would guess, so. As we, as we go into their final week, or final days before our winter break, we do have exam week coming up, it just starts in a few days, starts Wednesday with our last period of the day exam, and then Thursday and Friday are the remainder of the exams for our high school students. With that, because we have exams happening at the high school level, we're also taking the opportunity with our middle school students to take advantage of some time, and we are hosting JA in a day for our middle school students. One day this week, it's gonna be on Thursday, so we're looking forward to that. And it does, as she mentioned, it takes a, it takes a community to put that on. So thank you to everyone in Vance for coming in to make that happen. Yesterday, maybe you got out, if you had a nice, got away from the sunshine a little bit, but the orchestra and choir put on their annual holiday concert, and it was fantastic. Just kudos again to all of the students performing that, and to both programs for a job well done. And we all walked out of there feeling very festive, so, very, very good job to all of them. Let's see, two thousand nineteen is upon us, as we were talking earlier. So with that, we have been preparing for the nineteen-twenty school year. I feel like I've been saying that more often than not lately. So with the curriculum guide that you can review at your leisure, we do have just a couple changes that we're making this year. We've tried to progress each year to offer more opportunities that meet the needs of our students, give them more options, whether it be in the area of workforce, or whether it's bringing the best out of the gifted and talented interests and what they have to offer us. So, with that, some of the highlights is, I'll start at the middle school level, we are gonna be adding a new gifted and talented course. It's gonna be a gifted enrichment class, and it's gonna be for seventh to eighth graders who are identified as gifted. This is the first time we're stepping into this platform, so we're in the process of taking the next six to eight months, as we approach August, to formulate exactly what that curriculum will look like. We're excited that we have, we're a step, we're a step ahead. I think Mrs. Savage will say this in the area, we have, within our building alone, we have three gifted intervention specialist teachers, certified teachers, and we also have more district-wide. We're trying to take advantage of their expertise and what they have to offer, and just help enrich the kids and give them a little extra oomph in the classroom, and find some topics and criteria that meet their needs. So we're excited to offer that in grades seven and eight, and we just hope that that expands each year from this point forward. At the high school level, continuing again to offer honors courses or accelerated courses at every level, we're stepping into that world in the area of world history. So we're gonna offer a freshman world history honors course, on which we have not had, so it just continues to build the pieces of the puzzle, having an honors course available grade seven through twelve for our students, as they go through all of our experiences in the building. The weights and conditioning class, if you haven't had a chance, swing by someday and check out the Fieldhouse Weight Room. Coach Savage, Mr. Savage, has quite the training regimen going on in there. That class is really caught on, it's great for male team males, which we love to see the increased numbers for both there. But that's also gonna be offered in early bird fashion, so we found a need that some of our students wanna wake up early and get their workout in, and their training done before regular classes start, so they'll be out here bright and early. We currently offer Spanish as our elective for foreign language, but we're gonna add on top of that, Ms. Olivia Elkins is also fluent in Polish, and she's willing to teach Polish to our students, so we're gonna see if there's any interest there, so we'll see if that builds. And then, on the workforce development side, we've been spending some time working with Northwest State Community College. We're in the process of putting together a class that focuses on manufacturing skills, and the class is gonna be offered in a fashion that a student can earn college credit, or if they're not able to meet the needs of some of the Northwest State requirements, could also take the course as non-degree seeking. But the course is gonna be a manufacturing skillset-based course that gets a student a certified production technician certificate in the end. So we're in the process of working with them to be able to offer this to our students. We hear from our businesses loud and clear, each time we meet with them, that they need the hands-on, applicable skills, and if they come in with certain credentials, we can hire them now, especially as the need to hire is still evident each and every day. So we're excited for what this opportunity has to bring. It's been quite a process throughout the fall to get the gears in motion, but we're ready for it, and we'll just keep building upon that. And then with all that, more exciting news, the state did approve, just, I think it was early last week?
Early last week.
More graduation, I guess, alternative pathways to graduation, more alternative pathways to earn your diploma. So it goes back to what we went to for the class of two thousand eighteen, in that it's not solely focused on your state end-of-course test scores, or the minimum on ACT. Now, if you retake some of your lowest test score areas, you have options as a student or options as a senior. So you can prove a certain GPA, you can prove a certain attendance rate, you can prove that you've had a hundred and twenty hours of work experience. That's the biggest one that we focus on, is we find many of our students are working, and they can show their paid subs and paychecks for their time, putting in the work. So we're excited for that, because that really opens the door and doesn't limit some of our students in the possibility of graduating this year, so. I guess, great job on them, and getting that through, be that passed, not only for us, but for the state. So, when we come back from break, January scheduling month, so all these things that we talked about for two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, our guidance counselors put into motion, they hold guidance nights. The middle school is the fourteenth of January, and the high school is the twenty-second of January. The coincidences for their parent-teacher conferences, we're trying that for the first time. That way, as parents are coming in, they can go to a variety of different meetings for their grade levels or subject areas, and find out information that pertains to them. But they can also have the opportunity to meet with teachers, and if they're learning about the classes that are gonna be offered, they can also pick the brains of the teachers that are gonna be teaching them. So, we're looking forward to those two busy nights coming up after the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a need to go into executive session under the topic of B, purchase of property for public purposes, or sale of property in a competitive bidding, so we would entertain a motion. And there will be no action taken, but I would entertain a motion to go into the session.
So moved.
Scott, and then Deb, second. We got the nod down here.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.